Well, at weekly meetings in December and early January, the task force continued to review the proposed historic preservation zoning for the town of Red Hook. And assessed and reported by historic Red Hook on their reference to update the 1992 survey of historic structures which was prepared for the town of Red Hook. And lists historic structures that we want to identify and include in the new zoning regarding demolition of such structures and preservation of such structures in the town of Red Hook. So, that work continues. And the task force also has got a new draft on the traditional neighborhood street standards which we're working on. And hopefully, these will come to fruition in a few months. And so, that work also continues. We also, I don't know, I mean, to respond, one of our members, Tim Lynch, has agreed to stand down because of a perceived conflict of interest with his business and client that he has who has worked with the planning board. And then, we're also proposing zoning, you know, in the same area. And so, it would be a conflict of interest. He agrees. He's standing down. I think that was the only other thing we wanted to talk about.
Thank you. In terms of these street standards, are they still in process? Are they attached here?
Yeah. That's the latest draft, supposedly the drop dead draft after the planner and the lawyer have got their heads together. But again, the task force will elaborate in detail. And if there are any, if there are no other changes at some point, put it together to present it to the town board.
It would be nice to have that wrapped up.
Right.
Okay.
We're supposed to do that this Friday, by the way.
This, tomorrow?
A day.
The day after tomorrow. Okay. Good. And were you able to add to the agenda the resident who asked for a date?
Yes. Yeah, I sent him an email and he's responded.
Okay.
And he'll be there Friday at nine o'clock.
Great. Terrific. Thank you, Bill.
We are rolling?
We are rolling. Okay. So, we'll take a break from committee reports to back up a little bit and say thank you, Steve Roberts, for coming out in this cold to tape the town board meeting on January 22nd. And we have two very important presentations that we didn't want the public to miss. One of which is the Dutchess Community Action Agency and the importance of it in the community, throughout the communities, throughout the county. And with us is Liz Spera, the director, the executive director of Dutchess County Community Action Agency. Liz, do you mind using the microphone?
No.
Would that work for you?
Balance mine. Oh, well, I brought a lot of collection of materials to share. Do you want that one? Please not get away from the screen. First of all, thank you for inviting me to come this evening. I'm sorry I was unable to attend the first meeting I had where you invited other nonprofits to speak about the needs of the community. But I'm happy to be here tonight, want to answer some of your questions on, at that time, it was the nutrition needs in the community and what sort of access we have and how great the need is. But there are a couple of other important things that are coming up very quickly that I would want the public to know about. So, I did pull some reports that are strictly for Red Hook in order to sort of identify what's happening up here. We've noticed county-wise, as you said, Community Action is a county-wide agency. We have four sites throughout the county, one right here in Red Hook on Markets, East Market Street. So, in the last three, four years, we've seen a 50% increase in the number of families who have come to access services. And a lot of, and a lot of those families are accessing food. They come to the food pantry to get assistance, to stretch their dollars, to meet their nutritional needs, their family and their children. What a food pantry package is, is three days' worth of food for every member of the household. So, that is enough money to then maybe put a little bit more towards their electric bill. And we've found that it isn't every single month, which is when families can come, you're allowed to come every 30 days if you need be, and some do. But on average, families come maybe two to three times a year. So, it is when it's a need. It is a definite need. And the value of that food is significant to that family in need. So, in, last year, we just finished our, every year we do an annual program report for the Department of State. So, I pulled the 2013 figures. And in Red Hook alone, 86 households representing 215 individuals accessed services at the Red Hook Community Action Office. Six homes in Red Hook are weatherized. I'm not sure if you're familiar with weatherization. But that's a project that goes into the home. They do an energy audit. They assess where the family is losing their energy dollars. And then, they come in at free of cost to this household, income eligibility applies, like the heat guidelines, it's same as heat. We'll come in and put all of those measurements into the home, free of charge to family. And in some case, reduce their energy burden by 20%, which is again, a significant savings for a family on a fixed budget or a low-income family. We have an emergency fuel program, the No Heat Emergency Fuel. The nearest depot to Red Hook is Rhinebeck Convenience. And in this year, I did use this year's figures, that starts November 1st, 10 households have accessed emergency fuel. They can get 10 gallons of fuel at night or on the weekends to keep their heat going until they can apply for services at the Department of Families and Children's Services, previously DSS. We've also helped 14 households with financial assistance. Through various streams of funding resources, we're able to help families, sometimes it's a rental assist or a utility bill. Sometimes it's something such as they're a working person and their car has broken and without getting it fixed, they won't be able to stay at work. So, whatever those little pots of money that come through our agency, some are donor-specific. And we helped 14 households in that area, two of which were prescription assistance. When we take this, the number of households, and look at the number of packages of food, there were over 175 emergency food packages prepared for folks who live in the Red Hook area. The two items that I really wanted to make sure that I made you aware of as well and to get out is, as I mentioned, the emergency fuel program. We administer that emergency no-heat plan for the county. We do it with food depots throughout the county. And we also have client advocates at our offices that will help families apply for the heat assistance. The income guidelines for heat is 60% of the state median income. And as of just the beginning of this week, a new program has rolled down to the county that is called HEAT+. And that will help families up to 80% of the state median income. So, beginning now, families who were in that 0 to 60% can get possibly a third emergency heat benefit. And folks that have been just over income for any help with their furnace repair or getting some funding to help purchase the fuel, they will not be eligible if they're under the 80%. So, I have brought brochures that list those two incomes, and I can get more if these go out quickly. The other program is coming up soon, and they already are setting appointments, is that in a collaboration throughout the county, we participate in what's called the Cash Coalition. And this does free income tax return preparation for low-income families who have some employment. The goal for us is that families who may not apply for their tax returns because they don't have a high enough income and they don't believe they'll owe taxes, if they have any earned income at all, they could be eligible for their earned income tax credit and thereby get a refund that they might not otherwise expect. And it's not something that if you don't apply for it, that the IRS will call you and say, "Oh, you forgot to apply for your earned income tax credit," and it sits there unclaimed. These, the preparers are trained by AARP Tax Aid, who've been doing this for longer than we've had the program in the county, primarily for senior citizens, but they're all very skilled. And the other piece of that is that they can also go back for years. So, if someone didn't prepare a return last year and thinks they could be eligible for the earned income tax credit, they can, they can do a return for up to three years ago.
That's great.
And we like to point out that the, there's so much economic benefit to the money on these tax returns because these are large sums of money. They come back to low-income households that they can now do major repairs to their home, to their car, any other thing that they've been holding out to pay for. And it gets spent in your community. They don't, they don't go to the next state to spend their tax return. It's money that comes directly into the community. So, I think I've sped right through everything that I came prepared to talk about. Is there any specific questions about the Community Action or programs we run or?
Would you give contact information for the PANDA audience so in case somebody wanted to use some of the services or in case somebody wanted to donate?
Sure. We have, the main, the main number is 845-452-5104. And the case management supervisor, her extension is 123. And she can, from that phone, direct them to the right site. The local number here is 876-1611. And that also is a community number to get set an appointment. With the 211, the scheduled earned income tax credit appointments, for folks that are on frontier, there's an 800 number they should use instead. If they're calling from a Verizon or a AT&amp;T, they'll get through to 211, but otherwise, they need the 800 number. But it's on all the printed material. Anything else?
Do you have any, do anything in line with the new medical programs or give any assistance in that?
We haven't, we aren't, I can't remember what they were calling, the trainers that are supposed to help families get, decide what insurance they want. We can put them, we have resource computers at all our offices for families to use. So, we can put them on the webpage if they feel comfortable enough of doing their own research. Maternal Infant Services, which I guess their main office is in Orange County, they do have a staff person who, I guess they received some grant money to be that person that goes throughout the community to help folks decide which insurance plan is most beneficial. But we don't have anybody trained. We can help point you to the right page, but at this point, we don't have someone who knows all the ins and outs of all the available insurance.
There is anybody scheduled to be here for a certain period of time?
I can check that. There was a woman who was going to be out in northeast, like, I think it was once a month. And I could check to see if they'd expanded her schedule and give you an update on that. We do have folks from some of the insurance companies, Fidelis as an example, who will meet with clients at our sites and review their particular insurance plans with them. You know, that's, they are hoping to sign them up for their insurance plans, and they probably have a full gamut of plans available. But someone who can cover everybody's plans and all the different levels, this one person for Dutchess County is going to be stretched thin.
Maybe get some.
Liz, in terms of the cold and Red Hook in particular, does, does the site here in Red Hook work with any of the churches for homeless? Do we have any arrangements made if people need shelter? Is that not a need here in Red Hook? Can you speak to that?
I haven't, not specifically. It hasn't been brought to my attention that we've gotten specific requests or overnight, "Where can I go stay?" We do work with families who've come in and are looking for more affordable housing, or they may be staying with a friend, they've lost their current housing. So, again, we have the resources available to help them search for affordable housing. But that's, that's the most need we've had here. I also didn't, skipped right over in my rush, that part of that no-heat emergency program is that if the furnace, if a family's furnace breaks, we have the capacity to get space heaters to them. The whole process of getting someone out to audit the furnace to see what's needed and then get the bids out takes a few days. But in the meantime, we can provide the household with space heaters to keep their home at least warm enough to keep them safe.
Do you accept donated foods and what are you looking for?
We definitely accept donated foods.
And what are you looking for?
Yes, the funding for food is very limited. And without the generosity of families who do food drives and drop food off, we would never be able to serve the families that we serve. For the most part, we're looking for shelf-stable food, canned goods, and pastas and rices, things that can be made into stews or combined. We do accept financial donations, which we would then be able to go out and buy meat products and freezer, we do have freezer capacity at all the sites for our food pantries as well. So, thank you. Anybody who wants to run a food drive, be greatly appreciated. And you can call the local Red Hook number and arrange for a drop-off or a pickup, we'll work that out. Have you done?
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for your patience and for coming tonight. We appreciate it very much. And the second presentation, we've been anxiously awaiting because our own Nancy Buskey has been in charge of it. And she's the dynamo behind the tree committee. So, we're loving to hear this. Thank you for coming, Nancy.
Thank you. Well, we have finished our forestry management plan. We were, we became a committee in 2008, and we were very fortunate to have, to start with an ordinance, thanks to Brenda and Chris Shaw. So, that was a big help because an ordinance is a biggie. So, then we, we spent the next few years, you know, figuring out what we had to do, what we needed to do. And then, we did a, an inventory. And so, we're at the point, we've worked enough together and done enough things, that we felt we were ready to try to write a forestry management plan, which was the logical next step. And we thought we would try to do it ourselves, complex, kind of locally grown. So, we, we kind of worked together and we spent the year working on it. I bring notes to the meetings. And I want to thank the tree committee because they were engaged, they had suggestions, they had comments, they really helped out a great deal. And I also would like to thank Ted Assad, who put it into a format that is very, very attractive. And all the pictures in it and all the trees in it are local. So, we, it's a guide. It's essentially what we've been doing. It's a guide. It's, I'm hoping that, that it's something easy to follow, it's not, it's user-friendly. The topics in the guide, we have an introduction. And I'll just read the introduction because then it kind of speaks of why we did this. "Tree-lined streets and canopy parks are not only inviting, but are natural providers for a healthy quality of life. Trees are central to our flourishing ecosystem. As their beneficiaries, we rely on them to clean our air, provide dynamic buffers, reduce noise, conserve our soil, clean our water, provide wildlife habitat, and add to the visual quality of our community. The goal of this management plan is to provide a strategic approach to sustaining the urban and community trees on a short and long-term basis. This includes the planting, removal, protection, and caring for trees in our community and coincides with the Town of Red Hook Comprehensive Plan, which states that the town will strive to ensure the careful stewardship of the natural environment for the enjoyment of present and future generations." So, that's what we're, we're trying to do. And in the table of contents, oops, let me go back a little bit here. We, we put a history, we have what we need to do for a budget. You know, when I came here, I didn't really understand what I needed to do for a budget. And thank gosh for Rose, she straightened me right out. And so, I put it in here. I have to have that budget in in August, okay? So, that's very helpful. I can go then. So, now whoever comes and, you know, as I said, committee members change, they have a document that kind of guides them through what we do. We have planting guidelines. We've been planting, and we have some ideas and some thoughts about how things should be done. We plant in the spring and the fall. But most of the technical information in here, definitely I got from some very reputable resources, which I've listed in the back. And through conferences that I've been to. We have a section on trees and construction. And this, I think this is a pretty valuable section because there are ways to save trees. And so, we've listed things that you should do and reasons and ideas about how to save the trees. We have a section on maintenance. Maintenance is one of the real tough parts because just taking down a tree or pruning a big tree is hugely expensive. But, you know, we have a lot of volunteers, and we've had many professional people help us out, donate services, which has been very valuable. But maintenance is very important. It's not just good enough to plant the trees, we have to take care of them also. We've, have a section on outreach. We think it's very important that we, you know, reach out to the community, let them know what we're doing, how they can help, and what, they can come to us and perhaps ask for trees. We've worked a lot with the schools. Eleanor has done a great program in the schools, a lot of work, and I really appreciate that. The, we give away seedlings every spring on our bidet. Linda takes care of those. She's our little, our nature, our little nursery person there. We also have a master tree list in the back. And that is always a toughie because things change with trees. We have climate change, so we see that sugar maples are suffering, so maybe we have to be careful. We want to make sure we have diverse, a lot of diversity. So, the master, the master tree list in the back is something that you can refer to if you want to pick out a tree, not only this committee, but you can go online and say, "What do they have? What have they planted?" Even the size. And also, we left a little recommendation, you can go online and check with Cornell, Nina Basak and Cornell. And then, also, National Grid puts out a great list. So, you can go there and check. And professional contacts, we belong to the Urban Forestry Council, we go through the relief meetings. So, we are in the network. So, anytime that we need information or, I am not an expert, but I know where to go to get the information. And that's been very, very helpful. And it's very helpful with grant writing, that we are involved, that we are Tree City. And we're also, now, we have the growth award, Tree City Growth Award. So, that's very important. We have a commemorative tree program. If you would like to have a tree planted to honor someone in your family or a friend or, Linda did that for us, that is in the addendum. Just come to us, contact us. We have how to plant a tree back there so that you can go online and say, "Okay, how do you do this?" And that's there. We have a list of the trees we've planted already in Red Hook. It's over 300 trees and shrubs. We have a street inventory, which is a huge job, thanks to Brenda. And also Karen Cadaret, who's not here, but they did the, they did the red park. So, we have that inventory, and we have the street inventory from Brenda. Thank you very much. That's a lot of work. And we have information, we have the master tree list, as I mentioned. And we have the references in the back so that you can know that we just didn't make this information up. We wanted this to be succinct, really user-friendly, so we have bullets. We tried to include best practices. It's not perfect, but it's a document that can be changed, added to, but it's a start. There are some things that we need to do in the future. We want to have a great trees program. There's a state program and there's a federal, a national program. But we thought we'd start with great trees in Red Hook. And this is another way to raise awareness about trees. So, that's something that we want to work on. We also need to address timber harvesting and clear cutting. That's, that's, that's a biggie. And I think, you know, that's going to need some more study. I gave you some notes. We are walking around it a little bit, and we're thinking about doing something with it. But it's going to take some more work, reading, looking, looking at other plans. And, but it is in our, it's on our radar, and that's, you know, something that we will be doing, you know, in the future. We're hoping that this guide can help us as a committee. It can, it'll be online. If somebody wants to look something up and check something, that someone can use it, look it up online on the Town Rep website. And we're hoping that it will be a document that the planning board can, feels that they can use and come to us and, and that we can give them some advice that they find that would be useful. So, I think that's it, unless, is there anything you want to add?
I just wanted to.
I just want to thank you again for all your work. Everybody did pitch in. So, there you have it. I don't know if you have any questions.
It's an excellent document.
It's a, it's a beautiful document, and the amount of information is stunning.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, I think it's a good start. I know it's not perfect, but.
What I would like to know is how many people worked on the tree inventory? And as much as there appear to be 675 trees identified.
Yeah.
That's immense.
That, that is immense. And I think, Brenda, how many, what, I know.
Hmm, oh, I don't remember. Maybe, maybe six or eight of us? I'm not sure.
That's incredible. How long did it take you to do that?
Several days, but then the analysis is what takes a really long time.
Sure.
That's a huge amount. And we, we now have the one from the park. And they have, there's, there's quite a few trees there, too. So, we have nearly, nearly 1,000 trees. I think it's a little over 900 and something trees that we.
Mine, too.
Yeah.
Are these primarily in the tree ones?
Um, there is, on, there are street trees.
Yeah.
And parked, in the park.
In the parks, okay.
Yeah. Street trees were like in the developments.
In the developments, right town.
Yeah. How about, is Tiffly in Red Hook villages, are they included in that?
No. The village has their own inventories.
Yeah. Tiffly did it a few years ago.
No, we haven't, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know what to do about that, I suppose.
Tiffly did do one several years ago.
Yeah.
Make a little, peripherally involved.
So, there you have it.
And I just wanted to say that this is an exemplary committee. They, each person is engaged. They have such an able chair. They've educated themselves. They're just going by the book about what you should do for a proper urban and community forestry management in a town. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda. Well, thank you for all your help. Because a lot of this wouldn't have happened without Brenda. So, I appreciate her help also.
How many copies are there of this stuff?
Well, I have, I, I just printed two, I, I did, I would be happy to send it to you electronically.
No, just if there's one in town.
Yeah, there's one right there, yeah. That one's even updated from this one.
And maybe the clerk's office, we'd want one. I mean, it's so beautiful.
I'm going to get one.
It's a beautiful piece. You've done it at just a wonderful town.
Have you been able to put them in the libraries?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Oh, we could. Yeah, we could really put them in the libraries. That's a very good idea.
Can you give one to the school?
I could give one to the school. We did, we did have, I did take this to Paul Finch and make sure that we could have the children's pictures in here without, you know, without a problem. He said, "Oh, no, it'd be great." So, but.
Well, cheers to the entire committee. Thank you all so much.
Cheers for Nancy and all of our work.
Thank you all. Thank you for continuing in this great job. It's such an important feature in the town. These, these trees make the difference, in my opinion.
We're lucky.
Yes, we are. Thank you very much, all, all of you.
And did Marcy want to stay on the, well, did she want to stay on the committee?
Oh, Marcy, Marcy. Where are you?
We're such a fun group.
You are.
She said yes.
Oh, great.
Finish that up if we want to.
Great, we'll finish that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is it actually on the website?
Is there a link?
It will be, yeah.
I mean, I can speak to it, yes.
Okay.
Twenty pages.
Yeah, maybe, well, we don't need that.
You know what? Just leave it at the town.
You sure you have enough of these?
Oh, I, I.
No, 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 I know, I know.
You can just leave it here.
You can leave it at the town clerk's office when you finish looking at it? That would be great.
Thank you.
It's a beautiful, beautiful job. Thank Ted Forrest for that help too.
He was pretty sick, me.
Okay, I think. We talked about a number of things. Let me see if I can recap where we were when we stopped. We finished the municipal task force.
Yeah, we finished the task force.
Task force, okay. And hats off to Panda for responding to our SOS tonight. Thank you very much, Steve Roberts, for coming in in the bitter cold and taping those two wonderful presentations. So, I think we're at the point where we can finish the committee reports with the recreation commission report and Harry is the liaison for that.
Yeah, this is in theory a downtime for the recreation commission, but in fact, there is an awful lot of office kind of work to be done, planning for next year. There's putting together a list of personnel requirements, a list of material requirements, and put together the plans of, in terms of both maintenance, staffing, and programs. So, John has been, has been doing that, has been meeting with the commission to discuss with them changes and, and the evolution of the summer programs. Then there's a lot of very, very accomplished people there who have great ideas and they're trying to put them together for, for next summer. So, be aware that in the background, all of this is going on, on many hours a week, all, all set up for next year.
Great, thank you, Harry.
Oh, this year, excuse me.
Yes, it is this summer, right. Next season. Jim, have you a report for St. Margaret's Committee?
Yes, I do. They met last on the 16th of this month. I wasn't at the meeting, but I spoke to the chairman subsequent to the, they said there's going to be a story on St. Margaret's stuff in the Observer this spring. They're still, and they're working on questions for that telephone survey. I told you the last time they hoped to have and then they'll pass them by us, you know, to get some public input. They want to get a list of questions, so each one of them, when they survey different people, they ask the same questions. The two new members that we had approved at our prior meeting, we're at the last meeting, that's Patty Hasler and Michael Brown. There's a, people have been interested in a paranormal study. The Poughkeepsie Institute of Paranormal Studies would like to do a paranormal study. Apparently, they've done this at other historic sites. And she's going to get more information and then she would let us know before she would allow, they do it free of charge. Before they would do that, she would bring it to the board and explain the whole idea.
I hope so.
What's the name of the paranormal, is Poughkeepsie paranormal?
Poughkeepsie Institute of Paranormal Studies, yeah. Apparently, they've done this at other historic sites, she told me, and they, you know, who knows? Anyway, and they're going to participate in, in Arbor Day, I think by being at the rec park and they're going to participate in hardscrabble as well. They'll have a, and that's, that's about it.
Great, great, thank you. Senior Services Committee, Brenda?
Yes, they met this month and they've changed their meeting date to the first Wednesday of the month and they meet at 9:15 a.m. They have been discussing the Aging in Place program that's growing in popularity. Rhinebeck had started a program that refers to that. And so, at the last meeting, they were discussing the several different seniors groups we have in the area and how that relates to this Aging in Place program. Possibly, one of those groups could be amplified to be more like the Aging in Place program, which is all about helping seniors stay at home. And they'll be doing a food drive this year. They always do a very successful food drive and they're working on their newsletter.
Great. Thank you, Brenda. The Sister Services Working Group met yesterday. They have decided to meet monthly on the third Tuesday of every month. They are still pursuing relationships and communications, both through library and through Red Hook Central School Studies Program, particularly Jen Huber's Global Studies classes with two towns, one in the Palestinian territory of Massa and the other town similar in size in Israel named Kafartavor. The students at Bard are, are engaged in studying what's going on there. They have traveled there. They have built playgrounds in, a playground in Massa. They have built a library for the children and the exchange between the Red Hook Library and those children is really quite touching. They, they did a quilt from our end and those children were, we feel are probably, now that they have a playground, that are able to understand what some of the images were that these children in their drawings sent to them. So, we forget that sometimes there are communities that don't even have playgrounds. So, it's wonderful to work with those people. The people on the committee are very interested in, in promoting the communication that's possible among us. And there are representatives that are both Palestinian in, in terms of their experience and Israeli in terms of their experience. And it's just a very, very interesting hour to spend with people that have done the traveling and have seen people firsthand, learned more about that area, which is one of such mysteries that many of us have never been there. Brenda, the Trails Committee?
The Trails Committee met and they, they have purchased the, the supplies needed to build the Aspenwell Access Trail to the new rec park. So, they'll be working on that this year. They wanted to know if they can proceed as seeker considered to be finished. They did get the Army Corps of Engineer approval with respect to the wetland mitigation plans. So, does that mean they can proceed? Do we know?
I think that the, the maps, so long as the maps that are the accepted maps by the Army Corps show that wherever they are building trails are not part of the mitigation, I think that they're safe to move forward. But I'd like to pass that by a couple of people before we give them the green light.
Okay.
Okay? Just want to be sure that we don't need engineering maps or, you know, more defined tools before we start. Because once we start moving earth around, we don't want to get in trouble with the seeker that has been performed.
Yeah, I don't think the Aspenwell Access is near the.
I don't think it is either.
In place at all.
Right.
And then also, one of their members has agreed to foster this work on enhancing the trail. It goes from Tivoli Bays through Tivoli Bays to the Fisher Center at Bard College. And it was one of the grants that we applied for that we didn't get, but that part of the grant doesn't require any resources from the town and the other parties involved are, were always willing to do that work. So, Rich Shaffo is going to try to move that project forward.
Good. Okay. Thank you, Brenda. And the zoning review committee, Bill, I think you reported that.
They did not meet.
They have not met.
There's no scheduled meetings.
No scheduled meetings, right.
Requesting for them to take any action.
Okay. Okay, so, I think that we have reached a point, I, I did not say that there, I didn't mention, but the Ethics Board has not met, has not had reason to meet, which is always a good thing. And I think otherwise, we've covered what's on the agenda. It is almost a little past 10 of nine. Does anyone have anything they would like to say before we vote to adjourn?
We just need to thank everybody for their participation in the Electronic Waste Recycling Day. It was an amazing success and we had five students help us out as part of their Martin Luther King Day of Service. And the village participated with Ed Blundell coordinating their effort and one of their trustees came out. Lori Houston, of course, had a major presence there and we originally thought we would fill 16 pallets. That's how many pallets and cardboard boxes the vendor gave us. And we, in fact, had to rush out and get more pallets. We did double that, 32 pallets of e-waste that now won't go to the landfill. So, congratulations to all.
Hooray.
And, oh, and Teresa, I wish you were here. She drove this big truck down Linden Avenue sliding and with four-wheel drive because the snowstorm started in the middle of all of this. So, it was quite exciting. The students had to lift these huge cabinets, you know? We had two students, Teresa and I, went to pick up from three people's houses who needed extra help. And of course, the students were doing the heavy lifting and with each successive house, the TV got bigger and heavier. So, I'm not sure the students were prepared for that, but they were good sports, so.
That's great.
It was great.
Yeah, as I, as I look back. It's, oh, everybody was so excited to see what was happening.
Console TVs. Yeah, it's before their time.
Right, right. Reflecting back on what we've talked about tonight, it's, it really is amazing to see the number of volunteers that we have involved in, on, on all these levels and all these committees and boards and, and volunteering on behalf of the town. And we are so, so grateful to all of them. If, is there any other public comment? Yes, Linda?
Linda Keeling, regarding the Trails Committee, will the trail that's being built be handicap accessible? As we know, the one that was put in at the present rec center is not actually handicap accessible because you cannot take a wheelchair and bring it along that filled-in area, which was a filled-in wetland. My contention is if it was built properly with wood planking, just like if you go to DEC or the state, state or federal parks, you will see that they're built above the wetland area so that you have the natural flow of water and the animals can survive properly. When we had Sandy Hurricane, it wiped out that and you had to go in and work on it, correct? So, this would save money in the long run. Do it properly, please.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Anyone else? In lieu of an eager, the comments, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
On favor? Thank you all very much and thank.